Might as well start it.
I think so Doug, thanks a lot everybody. Hey, uh, wanna thanks again for coming together uh as we are and uh just to uh have a chance to celebrate the what I call the Celtic month. We have Saint David of course on May or March first. We have Saint Pyron, the Cornish patron on uh the fourteenth. And then that Welsh uh immigrant Saint Patrick is on the seventeenth. Uh but uh today, we're gonna take a little time to kind of refresh ourselves with the the life of Saint David. Um and I'm gonna kind of break it into three parts. The first part, I'll just be talking about his times. So we can kind of get a feel for the setting of history in Wales when this uh great event happened with this man. And then I'll talk a little bit about David and then we'll talk about what followed because of his, the heritage of his example for us. Um, I'll be borrowing from a variety of sources, so I won't be giving any footnotes, so I'll save you that. Um, Saint David, known by a couple of names, David the Waterman and of course Dowie Sant, um was a Celtic monk monk. He was later an abbot and an Archbishop. He died on March first in the year five eighty-nine. And what's interesting, he's one of the uh patron saints of that we have that worked and died in the actual country where he was born, which makes him kind of unique in that way. Uh, it was the post-Roman period, so called the Age of Saints. And those who lived, let me bring this up for us here. There we go. Those who lived outstanding Christian lives during these early years were treated as saints even while they were still alive. Now, David, he didn't dine with Christ, he didn't slay any dragons. But in his lifetime, he was a highly regarded saint and missionary. He was well-known outside of Wales and Britain, uh even to Rome and Jerusalem. And the legacy that he left has had changed Britain. Britain would have been an entirely different kind of country if David had not been alive. During this period, uh begin, beginning of the Christian era, uh Wales, as we know, didn't really exist as a separate area. Uh, because most of Britain was occupied by Berthonic Celts as well as some of the original indigenous people. Uh, and then, of course, the Romans had their impact. Uh, the Romans, as you know, came in about seventy-nine A.D. Most of their influence was on the southeast part of Wales. And um by the time of four-ten A.D., the Romans disappeared as Rome itself became uh more fragmented on the mainland. Uh, we know then that there were the intrusions of those from Northern Europe, the Angles, the Saxons and the Jutes. And um they brought a kind of pagan culture with them, but it never had much impact on what we know today as Wales, the land that was west of the Y River. Now, we all know, and Doug, of course, has brought it to our attention in very good detail, that the word Wales is not a native word for these Welsh, the Berthonic Celts. It's actually a Saxon word, which means foreigner. And it was their reference for these people who occupied the land, who were the Cymru. Uh, it was written in the sixth century that there were fundamentally then three groups, as we can see on this map, who uh sort of occupied the land. There were the native Britons, which would be the ones that we're talking about, and those who had invaded. What also happened was a lot of native Britons under the impact of these invasions actually went over to Europe and occupied areas there along the coast of France in the area that we know as Brittany. So very much the people of Brittany and France are Celtic cousins of ours. In the fifth century, uh, as I say, it was a time of political chaos as the Roman Empire was falling apart. And to some extent, it was also true in Wales. You, we found that local life tended to center around influential families. And leadership during this period, if it had any sense of royalty to it, was founded mainly in the areas of Gwyneth and Powys. And uh these areas had a greater uh challenge from these invaders as well as the existing groups from the north, the Picts and the Scots, but they also had to deal with Irish pirates. And um a- along with the Vikings as well, so there were many influences that they had to deal with. In the south, there were a network of kingdoms that also emerged and they based their their organization of life on the basis of hill forts, which you're probably aware of. This is a Coggin camp. Which was in the area of Devon that we were looking at earlier. And this is from the fourth and sixth century. And it did not show that there was any Roman influence on it, so we have kind of an example here of a pure Berthonic Celt community. Uh, modern Pembrokeshire would then grow out of that as it would be found here as we look at that area where they have the tribe of the Mette down at the bottom. And the Kingdom of Devon would develop. And again, we see that similarity, words of Devon, David and so on. We also know that down here in this area of the Mette tribal life, uh, the Irish were involved because there had been a group over in Ireland that had been expelled from Ireland. And they found this as a place to settle in the fourth century. In fact, that's why we find in the archaeology of this area, the presence of the Ogham, which is a kind of alphabet that was constructed either on stone or on branches. And uh this gives you a rough idea of how it worked. There were ways that they could create some kind of written language. Uh, I won't claim to be an expert on this, so I won't get into it too much with you, but it was a way of showing some content. Again, this area Devon, uh, in the years of four ninety-five to five forty, which would have paralleled the life of Saint David. Uh, there was some unifying of the region by a person descended from this Irish lineage named Vortipor. And uh he kind of used the Roman models of organizing communities. Uh, but what also happened, this was the age of King Arthur. And King Arthur was a Berthonic Celt. And uh a lot of ethnic identity began to show up. And so we find it a lot in the names of the various leaders that emerged during that time. I mentioned the coming of Christianity. Again, we know it came with the Romans. And by the time of the fifth and sixth centuries, when Saint Patrick or Saint David was alive, uh Wales was a Christian society, but it seemed to be mostly in the south. And uh it seemed to be mostly still part of what were the upper classes, but it was sort of losing its impact. And so it was a time of what's been called disorientation and pilgrimage. And uh it was a time of uncertainty. And perhaps a time where there was a need for a new hope. And what we find is there began to mingle the foundations of this Christian influence with a new Celtic sense of things. And there became a very strong interplay between the Druidic practices of the Celtic people with Christianity. And some of the key elements was, was that there were recognized the ties that all nature had. If you think about the traditional Celtic cross, um you see that influence that's symbolized by the circle as part of the cross. In other words, they're all tied together. And that life and all creation are intertwined and they needed to be understood and respected. So Druidic faith had a part to do in the founding in Pembrokeshire of the beliefs of Christians during Saint David's times. We have an example here, Saint Thalia, he died, he was a contemporary of Saint David. And um we see that interview or interconnection here at the well, which is credited with Saint Thalia. There was the idea that it was his skull, which was a Druidic practice that made these very special waters capable of healing. Uh, the well is actually a strong spring that is rises up near where the church was at Saint Thalia head. And if you look back on this stone here, which is near it, you'll see some signs of the Ogham scraped in the sides of it. This is an example again of of Druidic beliefs about the importance of wa- waters and the effect of skulls, you know, a good Celt, if they were building a new house, they would always put a horse's skull right under the threshold of the house to protect it. Um, and the place that trees would play in everything. Here we have one of those classic um Celtic crosses. Which again, it derives, it's it's sourced from the Druidic depiction of the four main forces of nature that people lived with of earth, wind, fire and water. They're represented by the four circles within the cross. And this cross is at Nivern, which is east of where Saint David's church was. And um it's an example of this kind of symbolism. So as such.
Evan, can I interrupt? Am I the only one that is not seeing the the slides? I guess I am.
I see them on the edge, but I can't click on them, so no.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think they're advancing because all I see is the very first blue slide.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Let me go back. I wonder what happened here.
There it is.
All right, there you see that. Do you see it isolated now?
This is click to add.
Uh, I don't.
The click, the click to add would be if Evan wanted to type a title or something over that in PowerPoint. Um, Evan, maybe um.
Something's not working.
Well, I think it doesn't go to an autoplay and keep time with what you're discussing. So maybe in the future, your notes, you should put a highlight that says next slide to remember when you're.
When I bring up, okay.
Cause it doesn't advance for us.
Oh, no.
Not automatically.
Sorry, I wonder why. Okay, cause when I go to start the slideshow. So right now, you you see everything, right? You don't just see the isolated slide?
Right, but not everything, but a bunch of stuff.
All right.
Five slides.
Then I'm gonna have to go back to that. I apologize. I don't know what I'm doing wrong here. Doug, any ideas?
Evan, uh, I don't know how you're gonna get yourself out of it, but we're kind of stuck uh just viewing your raw PowerPoint.
I'm gonna stay with it.
What you can do is you have the power to click on each slide on your end and that should bring it up in raw mode in our end. I guess we should just do that.
Okay, now I'm clicking on it now.
Yeah, we see the cross now.
So you see just the cross?
Yes, uh-huh, we see that slide.
Then let me do that then. I wondered, I didn't know what the remedy would be. Okay. Um, yeah, if that's okay, right now you just see the the high cross?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll use that methodology then. Thank you.
Yeah, just click on the next slide to your left when you're ready to display.
Okay, well, let me emphasize again now about this this period with the conversions of the Druidic beliefs and Christianity. Celtic Christianity, it was that it would be more a matter of the heart than the head in the faith and that there would be more emphasis on sacred minis- mystery. And it was found that uh there was more local faith development be- because of this. Um, we find that um when people came over from the continent to bring Christianity, like Saint Augustine came to Canterbury, um, people weren't as open to it. They were antagonistic to this continental stuff that didn't seem to reflect the way they understood their culture. Can you all see that one?
Yes.
Okay, um, all of you, I hope, remember the series on Brother Cadfile. If you're not, I really encourage you to check it out. I love this quote from Brother Cadfile, who in the story is a Welshman who is part of a Benedictine order in Shropshire. "We Welsh are not quick in respect to rank or riches. We do not do often bow and scrape when any man flaunts himself before us. We're blunt and familiar even in praise. What we value, we value in the heart." And again, we hear that reflection of this. What we also discover is that um this early Christian practice kind of led itself to communities of monasticism. And we find like here's an early one that was in Cornwall on this rugged mount. We see the remnants of it that um is it uh Tintagel? And um this kind of model would prevail throughout the Welsh countryside wherever Christianity would arise in this Welsh fashion. Uh, the model for the monastery was typically the practice of hermits in the deserts of Egypt and the Middle East, who thought that the only way they could be truly faithful to God would be to live in isolation. And so that's what provoked a lot of this. The opportunities for monasteries would have been um uh prompted by the generosity of people who experienced conversion. For example, in Ireland, Patrick was able to establish a monastery because he converted a king and the king benefited the effort. When Augustine came to Canterbury, the reason he was able to get established was because he won the favor of a lord's wife who was already a Christian. Monasteries were often erected on sacred places and often that was tied to a uh Druidic uh place. And so this was not uncommon. Uh, what we find is that in this setting, the leader of the abbey, which was the abbot or the monastery, would be kind of the one that was in charge. They didn't have all the fancy politics we think of today. And life in the monastery was very simple. Uh, it was focused on worship, learning, healing. And uh it also provided a place for people who were travelers and pilgrims and those who were infirmed. One of the Welsh words that we're familiar with is Llan, L-L-A-N. We find it frequently in the name of places. And as you know, it's essentially means a holy place. So a lot of communities in present-day Wales were rooted in the existence of these early communities, but they also were centers for things for civil affairs to take place. They would have festivals. It might be a place where people would come together for legal transactions and so on. It was the connecting between these monasteries that Cainic gave this Celtic church its its sense of life within the area. And it was called the Golden Age of Celtic Christianity, and that's the age in which David was born. Uh, David was born about four fifty-four. He was born in the area at the time in southwest Wales called Manivia. And we find it near to present-day Saint David's in Pembroke. Uh, we know that his name David means the beloved. And what's interesting is birth was foretold about thirty years earlier by an angel, the Saint Patrick. Um, David's parents um were told that he was born on a cliff top during a fierce storm, and we'll see more about that location in a moment. His parents included a member of a princely family named Saint or Sanctus. And his mother was Nona or Saint Non. And she was a nun who supposedly attracted the attention of Sanctus, who then were overcome by her's, her beauty raped her and conceived the son. As a result, we know or supposedly believe that Saint Non was a niece of King Arthur, which meant Saint David would have had some kind of connection to the king that we'll mention later. David was raised very carefully by his mother in the Christian faith from a very early age. And he was greatly influenced by her character and her faith. Um, as a young man, he studied under Saint Clitha, who left the life of a soldier to become a mystic and had a monastery up near Glamorganshire. And later on, he studied for ten years under Saint Paulinus on the Isle of Wight, which is to the southeast of the mainland of Britain. Uh, it was here that David performed his first miracle. He restored sight to his master who had become blind from so much weeping. Paulinus though sent David away because he'd been warned by an angel. And this would be the foundation for David beginning to evangelize the British. He established his first monastery there in Manivia. And the location, we'll learn more about in just a moment. But in his career, he eventually established eleven monasteries in the south of Britain. Among them are the one at Glastonbury, one at Bath, one at Le- Leomin- Leo Minster, and then even over into France in Brittany. He founded fifty churches and the churches bear his name, all to this, all of them in the south of Wales. Uh, the main function in monastery life was in the Latin or a labora, and what that meant is prayer and work. And all the monastic movements carried out the same basic vows, as you may know. There was vows of obedience, stability, which meant once you formed a relationship with a monastery, you lived there your life. Poverty and chastity. But David also taught extreme austerity. It was kind of modeled after the tradition of those first early hermits that were found in the deserts of Egypt. Aura basics, it means prayer and praise. So the life of a monk included silence. They never spoke unless it was necessary. They prayed unceasingly, whether it was at work or it was at worship. And ongoing study was a regular part of life. Labora was work, as you might imagine. And all the work that they did at Saint David's monastery was by hand, even tilling the soil, which meant they did it by hoe. They didn't use animals or a plow. There was a remark made about the monks there. Every man was his own ox. Uh, farming and beekeeping were major activities and work was seen as an essential act of faith. They also had the practice of ministry of hospitality, caring for pilgrims and such. Their daily life was one meal a day, always vegetarian, always drank water, sometimes mingled with milk, never any meat. They had three hours of prayer and adoration every day. They woke when the rooster crowed and had frequent fasts. To be a member of one of these monasteries, you had to wait at the door for a minimum of ten days. You were tested in your intention and commitment by harsh words, refusals and painful labors. And when you were admitted, you had to leave all your worldly possessions and resources behind. Once a man became a monk, he must learn to die to himself. And he had to reveal all of his temptations and secret thoughts to his abbot. David was strict in governing his monasteries, but very loving in the treatment and correction of his monks. He was lovable and happy. He was ascetic, which means he lived very basically without a lot of elaboration. He was found to be a very persuasive preacher. He was admired for his strength of character and dedication to worship. His nickname Waterman is because he would only drink the water, as I mentioned earlier. And water was preserved in the stories that were about him. For example, that he would do self-imposed penance by standing neck deep in a lake of cold water, reciting scripture. Also, the springs of water would come forth wherever his spirit moved. So again, we see the dramatic connection, Druidic connection. And it was said, quote-unquote, "His missionary work opened many fountains in dry places." It's reported that all he wanted for himself was a life of study and contemplation. He didn't, he didn't want fame and fanfare. But eventually later, he was elected bishop, but he really wanted to stay out of worldly affairs. He just wanted this quiet life of aura labora. But it led at one point to him having to be coerced to actually leave that contemplative life to go to a council where he had to oppose another British-born uh theologian named Pelagius, who was teaching a heresy that you had earned salvation, God didn't just give it. Which later, of course, was not adopted. David proved so eloquent and learned that he was selected to be the new Archbishop of Wales, which meant now he was responsible for all of Christianity within the area we know as Wales. One of the miracles was that when his name was announced, the crowd couldn't hear or see him as he began to talk. That the ground raised up under his feet so they could see and hear him. And a dove landed on his shoulder as a sign of God's approval and blessing. That's why often when you see him in icons, he's wearing the things that a bishop would wear. He'd have long hair. There's a shoulder, there's a dove. And it shows him standing on a hill. According to one tradition, he went to King Arthur and asked that they move the uh the the center where the Archbishop normally functioned to Manivia from Careleone, which would be further to the east, and Arthur granted it. Later in his life, a number of Irish and British saints would be his pupils. And they would do so at the monastery. David had several miracles credited to him beside the one that we heard of his teacher's blindness. There was the raising of the hill, which I just shared with you. We have another occasion where he was traveling to Jerusalem with Saint Perrin, who is the uh saint from patron of Cornwall. And on the way, he raised a widow's son to life. But probably the most dramatic one, which interestingly enough parallels the story for Saint Benedict, kind of the father of monasticism, where his monks tried to poison Saint David because they thought he was too demanding in his rule of life. A man who was in Ireland named Saint Siton was warned and on the back of supposedly a sea monster, we don't know what it was. He came over one night, appeared at the monastery, he ate the bread that Saint David was supposed to eat. And David was spared. We've all seen Saint David's flag as a distinct remembrance of him. When he died in five eighty-nine, he supposedly lived over a hundred years. Some, depending on who you're talking to, say it was a hundred and forty-seven. Some witnessed that his soul was carried to heaven. He was buried where the cathedral now stands, although there's always been questions about the bones that have been found there. He wasn't canonized until um eleven twenty, so we're talking about uh five to six hundred years later. But ironically, his name appears on lists of saints from as early as seven thirty A.D. In fact, by the year eight hundred, he already had a feast day set on March first. People so powerfully recognized about him. It's also noted in the strict calendar that on March second, the day following is the feast day of Saint Non, his mother. And on March third is the feast day of Saint Lily, who was a disciple to David later in his life. And so those first three days of March were considered formerly holidays in South Wales. But he's the Saint David we know. And it's not a bolsterous celebration like we think of as a national holiday. Where nations claim their victories and everything. It's more a remembrance that, that they are a patient nation in spite of whoever has dominated them. The leek and the daffodil were both known as symbols of Wales. They share a common name. It's interesting that Shakespeare mentions the leek. As an emblem of the day back in the fifteen hundreds. And it's considered that it was, it was a Welsh emblem even before that. It said that in the days of King Henry the, the fifth, who was a tutor, who was of the Welsh family. That they were told about payments of leaks to the household guards on Saint David's Day. To honor that day. There's also the legend that the leak is linked to Saint David because. He ordered his soldiers in a battle, ordered so Welsh soldiers in a battle with the Saxons. To wear them on their helmets when they fought in a victorious battle, so they could know each other. It's also suggested that the leak became important because it was part of Saint David's diet. So somehow it became symbolic. The daffodil isn't such, doesn't have such literary claim to it. It's a much more favorable element. I, I suspect if I may be. Bold, I would say that ladies would rather wear daffodils than leaks on Saint David's Day. Is that a fair comment maybe?
Maybe.
Now, and we'll notice that David's name is in the name of the flower. Um. And what's also interesting is the parallel of when the blooming of daffodils occur. Which about the same time of the year, around March first, if we're unfortunate. Let's talk more now about David's legacy. Uh, while it was built much later on the grounds of where the monastery had originally been. The cathedral was built in a hollow called Glen Rosson. And the reason it was founded there was because he found his monastery in a glen that would be out of the view of Viking raiders. Uh, they did on occasion find it. We know that there probably were a dozen attacks by Vikings on the original monastery and the early cathedral. To get to it, you have to descend thirty-nine steps through a cemetery. Uh, this is a photograph of the cathedral today. In the back, you can see part of the bishop's palace I'll mention in a bit. Um, the architecture you see is from the twelfth century. And it has a bit of that Norman quality, that militant nature. But it also adopted more of the Gothic, which was a style that portrays to praise God. There had to be repairs over time, such things as Oliver Cromwell. His troops stripped the cathedral of all its metal, including its lead roof. Um. Here we have an aerial view of the cathedral. And you can see on the lower uh, right-hand side, the, the close. Um, and it's considered one of the finest churches in Wales. This is the west front of the cathedral where the main door is, and it's always in danger. Because of the unsettled ground on which it stands. It's had to add numerous attention over time for fear of collapse. And repairs that have been made have had to depend on other materials and so on. So you see, there's kind of a mix. It even had to be attended to because, believe it or not, there was a, where's my note? I'm sorry, I don't have the note, but apparently it struggled with an earthquake. If you can believe back, I think in the thirteen hundreds. Um, the gatehouse. Is the main entrance to come into the cathedral grounds or yes. And it's from the fourteenth century. And the closed wall, which you see here with the gate, is the part, I'm sorry, am I not clicking? I apologize. Anyway, um. It has been given a set of bells in nineteen thirty-one, which included some that came from friends in the United States.
Uh, Evan, I can see the slide of the bell tower.
Thank you. Thank you for that confirmation. Um, the um. Spaces being, by the way, if you, um, the bells are played. For each service on Sunday, but for a donation, you can get them to play the bells for you if you're there. And inside. They're developing a display of stones from the area. Dating from the fifth and sixth century, which would have been the time of the founding of the monastery in Saint David's life. The bishop's palace was much later, but um, you can tell by its grand style, it's about parallel with the cathedral. Uh, obviously bishops are different than they are today, I can assure you. Um, we also see here the cloister that I pointed out. It was a place of quiet prayer and passage to parts of the cathedral. Here we see a floor plan of the cathedral today. You'll notice that. You'll notice that there are chapels in various parts to commemorate those who have been champions of faith. The Holy Trinity Chapel, which is the one right behind um. Here, I don't know if you can see my cursor or not. Uh, the Holy Trinity Chapel is where they believe the bones of Saint David are buried. There are also numerous tombs and effigies found throughout the cathedral as it was common. Uh, this is as you look to the nave. What's interesting about the floor of the nave is it actually slopes downwards. So the water will pour out the, the door on the west end. Um, it's because of that shifting on the unsettled ground that it sits. And I mentioned the earthquake earlier, it was in twelve forty-eight. So it was shortly after the cathedral was built in its first version. We find one of these examples of a tomb in front of the altar. It's down here at the. It's down here at the bottom. And uh, it's from Henry the eighth, it's his grandfather Edmund Tudor. There's been a great deal of restoration. The cathedral hosts about three thousand pilgrims and visitors every year. Back in the time when um. Nobility was more likely to be here, the choir. Uh, would become the places for them to sit and it was not uncommon for them to have their designated seat. And these would be then impressed with the name of the noble that would occupy it. And so there are many names like this found in the choir section. Here's a, a view of the organ. Uh, it dates from the late eighteen hundreds. And because of that. Uh, every year in May and June, there are regular choir festivals and other concerts. Held that the people celebrate at the cathedral. Now, why is the cathedral important? Well, because of pilgrimage. Um. This is an example of the coastline that would be part of the pilgrimage to Saint David's Cathedral. Pilgrimages were undertaken because they were acts of devotion. They also were an opportunity to make amends for sins, so they were penance. They could be a trip that we took because of giving Thanksgiving for a special blessing. Or just because your life needed some inspiration. They were meant to be difficult journeys if they were going to be worthwhile. So they frequently were walked by people, although today I'm sure not entirely the case. The intent was to be reminded of the spirit of the place. Again, we're back into Celtic spirituality, the idea that we're connected to where we are. And the idea was that each pilgrimage would take you deeper into the spirit of the place. So that it would be a place of new life. In the time when David was made a saint by the Roman church, they also determined that it would, he was so significant. That two pilgrimages to Saint David's burial site and cathedral would be equal to taking one pilgrimage to Rome. And that likewise, three pilgrimages would be equal to taking a pilgrimage to Jerusalem. So David was held in very high esteem in this. Um, and so it's had, the cathedral has had a dominant presence. In, in the British lifestyle since the twelfth century. Royal visitors have visited the shrine often. Uh. Welsh kings went. Henry the second came and traveled dressed as a pilgrim. Edward the first, now remember Edward the first was the one with the Normans that tried to dominate Wales. Um, he came and did a pilgrimage to it. Probably the, one of the most important royal visitors was William the Conqueror. Who visited Saint David soon after the Battle of Hastings. Again, we see the cliffs that pilgrims would walk. On the path to Saint David's, their journeys would take them by other sacred places, including holy wells. And churches and Celtic crosses. Many of them associated with the earliest pilgrims that would have been there. They would have rested it in the verren where we saw that Celtic cross earlier. And they would sometimes take a shortcut. Um. Along the way, they would often stop at Saint Non's site. This is on the coast where supposedly Saint David was born. And. Next to this, this is the present chapel. And these are the remains of what they believe was the original chapel. That Saint Non had occupied back at the time that, that David was born. Again, it's believed that he was born here in the midst of a storm. Here's the well that's associated with Saint Non. Again, recognizing that druidic character that's part of Celtic Christianity. It being a healing, what wells are generally seen as healing. I want to shift to the area because Saint David, it's a little hard to see here. It's down here in Pembrokeshire. Near the coast. But let's go to the city. Uh, the city of Saint David's is one of the smallest villages in Britain. But Queen Elizabeth the second raised it to city status and granted her, granted it official city status, which is very rare. Um. It's located within the Pembrokeshire Coast National Park. It's therefore surrounded, as I've shared earlier, with all kinds of, of uh, natural wonder. This is the White Sands Bay at Saint David's Pembroke. It's a beautiful beach. If you were looking for a place to stay, you might look for the Old Cross Hotel, which has been offering hospitality for quite some time. Or perhaps another one of the local bed and breakfasts that are offered along the way. And then as you walk the path of pilgrimage in the area, you get to feel the world in which Saint David lived. And if you're looking for some fun, you might grab a few moments and take some water excursions. Other things found in the area sometimes when people are there are dolphin and whale watching. And if you're lucky, there could be sheepdog trials going on. And of course, Saint David's Day. Now that's not Kansas City, as you might assume. How I wish. This was Cardiff. And we see a parade being led by a personification of Saint David and all the people celebrating. And here we see children getting caught up in it. They brought their, their effigy of, of Saint David. And of course, the classic daffodil. And of course, what could not be complete without ladies dressed in traditional garb singing during the parade. And Doug handing out their daffodils. And here was an interesting note I found in two thousand seventeen. None unlike what had happened earlier. Queen Elizabeth presented leaks to the royal members of the Royal Welsh Regiment. And this is their ass, their mascot. However, with the COVID, one of the aspects of celebrating Saint David's Day. Is probably not happening and that's gathering together to sing while you're downing a few pints of local ale. We'll talk about David himself. What's his legacy? Well, they can be summed up in these three terms. Park, which basically translates respect. It's that sort that you can only be earned by showing it to others. This was part of what Saint David encouraged. Body easel, being lowly in the sense of not being puffed up arrogant or proud, being humble, in other words. And then catch of all, to be at home, both with God and with your neighbor. This is believed to be from the last sermon that Saint David gave before he died. And it's become a classic reminder of what Saint David's witness was. Be joyful, keep the faith in your creed. So do the little things that you've seen me do and heard about. I will walk that path that our fathers have tried before us, by that he means his Christian fathers. Do the little things. That is the classic line of Saint David's model for us. And what I'd like to do is share with you how the children celebrate. With this song. Oh, don't tell me it's not gonna work. Oh. Doug, how did I fail on this? Let me see.
Uh, we tried sound on one other presentation and um. Sound, sound is very hard to get over a Zoom meeting, so I don't, I don't recommend that we try it.
Okay, I'm gonna do one more thing to see if by any chance it'll work at all. There it is.
It's going.
Can you hear it? If you want to get to the words and hear this full, I left off one of the verses for the sake of time. Here's the website where you can find those words. Just a delightful way to see how the children are a part of this. You'll notice they were singing in Welsh. So that made it even extra special. And with that, I'm going to go back. Welcome to those I hadn't talked to before. If you all want to unmute yourselves, and if you have any questions or thoughts to share, let's share with one another. Yes, Lucy?
Evan, thank you for all the work that you did. I know that wasn't easy and I really appreciate all that you've done.
Here.
The Welsh flag behind you.
Oh, well, yeah, I mean, you haven't seen the bookcase either, Lucy, so. But I try to give it a little spirit. Thank you. Yeah, and I'm sorry that my technical skills, I always give people the excuse, I'm still on a flip phone. So it shows you how sophisticated I am.
We did more than I could have done, so don't worry about it.
Well, Doug's been a help too, so.
Thank you, Doug.
Other shot, any other thoughts and anything to share? Did you learn anything?
It was informative and I liked very much that you closed with the modern day Saint Davids and some of the pictures around the town. Well, being a historic preservationist, I also love the aerial views put in there.
Well, I thought if we could not get there ourselves for a pilgrimage, we'd make a similar effort here.
Yeah, the modern day Saint David celebrations were a different view on it. So that was, that was good.
How wonderful it would be if we could have something like that here.
Work on it.
Other things to share? Abigail, I think you're a relatively new face. Anything you'd like to share?
Hello, girl. Start my video here. Hi.
Hi, thanks for joining us. I'm sorry I was so boring. I see it helped you put some.
No, it was very interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's a good, a good sign that he's sleeping.
How old is your baby, Abigail?
He's three months.
Oh, sweet.
Oh my, that's wonderful. Yeah. Well, let me just share some of our local news for those of you who are here locally. Abigail, where are you geographically?
I'm in Emporia, Kansas.
Oh, okay, great. Say hi to our friends down there.
They're close.
Yeah, not too far.
Let me tell you what we have in store for us. Next month, we're going to be gathering here locally at the Courtyard Theater at John Knox Village in Lee Summit, where we're going to enjoy The Dark Horse, which is the story about the horse in that Swiss or Welsh village where they used it to revitalize the village. We're also working on having a gathering to celebrate our hundred and thirtieth anniversary of the society. Hopefully on May Day. Doug is part of the team preparing us for that, and we'll learn more later. I'm also working with a young lady who is from Western Wales, who is on the soccer team at Kansas State University. And the son of one of our Welsh-born families, the Joneses, to have a Zoom event sometime early this summer to talk about her experiences of soccer as a young person in Wales and here. And Reese Jones, who will be with us, he is currently over in Cardiff attending the university, working on a master's where he hopes to be a sports broadcaster. So it seemed like a natural to get Reese to be part of that experience. So those are things we have immediately in place. We're thinking about maybe trying to arrange in the fall, maybe a field trip up to the Welsh Center in Wymer. So we're trying to get, and we're still waiting to plan to get the details going to hopefully have a Zoom gathering topic on the Welsh community in Patagonia. So that's what's in the works, God willing. Anything you want to share before we give thanks for today? Well, I'm glad you could all come and join with this today. Again, I know for a lot of you, it's old news, but I hope it was refreshing to review it. And I hope that you enjoy the good day that we're having and our weather. And God be with you. And with that, I'll just say peace.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you, Evan.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.